All right, welcome everybody to the Mount Mansfield School District Board Meeting for April 10. We are at Underhill Central School. I'm Edie Grinning, Board Chair. Hello, welcome. We have a forum ready to get started. Just to run through the agenda, we have community comments at the beginning. Then Jen Coate will give us the principal's report. We will approve the Golden Apple nominations. After that, we have two policies that have been warranted to previous meetings to approve. We have the superintendent's report to discuss. It might take a little more time than that. We'll see. Meeting minutes from the last meeting and maybe from the meeting before that? I guess just the last meeting. We'll have to figure out which meetings we haven't approved yet. Committee reports. A lot of good committee work has been happening. Conversation about Act 127. Little discussions about the DSBA resolutions and then any other business after that. Anybody have any changes, modifications, adjustments to the agenda? All righty. Roll, Pat? Do I call roll?
For sure.
Do we have favorite spring activity?
Gardening with kids at Camel's Hump. Laura Arneson.
Here. Gardening at home with my own children. And baseball, right? It's now baseball season.
Heather Campbell.
Present. And sure, watching baseball.
Heather Chadwick. Is that absent?
Can you hear us? Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks. Tom Chaney.
Present. And my favorite thing to do is nice evenings like this outside on the back deck with my family.
Allison Kosikowski-Konan.
Same as Tara and you, Pat. I'm a big gardener. Good to see everybody.
Bill Conley.
Present. And enjoying board meetings, I guess.
Edie Grinning.
I'm here. Outdoor tennis is probably what I'm looking for. Yeah, spring activity.
Eric Gildemeister.
Yeah, present. Riding a bike, got anything with two wheels.
Diane Curson-Glipman.
Here. Getting out on the bike for the first time and getting into the garden by myself. No children, no family, myself.
Just neighbors, right Diane? Noisy neighbors.
Especially when they have little ones that come over to inspect the crocuses.
Ethan Maurer.
Well, certainly baseball, softball, but I'm excited. I heard the first peepers tonight.
Stuart Morisho. At absent?
Think so.
Katie Nelson.
Here. Mine is definitely hanging out at the park in Richmond and seeing all of the parents and families that have been in hibernation over the past few months. And if you want to find Tara or Heather or myself, we will be in that park this next week until the middle of June.
Lisa Pollock.
Present. My favorite is to actually attend seminars about gardening and then looking out at my garden pretending that I will be a gardener this summer.
Andrew Pond.
I'm present. I'll go with just opening the windows.
And do we have Kennedy Jensen?
Not tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, community comments. Do you have comments or are you just here to hang with us?
I'm just hanging, but I have to tell you, my favorite spring activity is maple sugaring.
Your brother has a big progression.
And I don't think there's anybody online. Community members. Okay. All right. Jen, you're with us more.
Thanks for being here, everybody. It's really nice to see everyone live in person. So I'm Jen Coate, I'm the Principal of Underhill Central School. It says, "Student engagement and voice is essential for empowering and engaging students." Off-School Meeting is one way we promote students' voice and engagement at UCS. The entire school comes together during this time to celebrate our learners, community, and various other initiatives and events that are happening. Each classroom leads an Off-School Meeting once a year to promote students' confidence and leadership skills. Students also participate in creating school-wide expectations and classroom rules at the beginning of the school year. They learn that we are all contributing members of a community and the importance of taking care of ourselves, each other, and our space. Another example of student engagement is having our three, four students engage with our kindergarteners as book buddies. During this time, three, four students read with kindergarten students and build relationships with them that carry over to other school-wide activities. We believe that social-emotional learning is essential for students to learn how to identify their feelings, understand and communicate with each other, and build strong relationships. DAP use mindfulness, restorative classroom, and restorative practices approach to support students with emotional regulation, self-management, and connection with themselves and others. Lunch bunches have been created for students to practice their FEL skills. Bunches meet on a rotation and consist of one to two staff and approximately five students. We consistently adjust our core instructions to meet our learners' academic and social-emotional needs. Building a strong foundation of literacy has been a top priority for all staff, kindergarten through fourth grade. We have prioritized word study practice in all grade levels with a focus on phonological awareness in kindergarten through second grade. Staff in our primary grades have shifted their teaching from whole-group instruction to center work. Providing direct instruction in centers provides opportunities for differentiation, small-group work, independent time, and learning through play. We continue to put literacy at the forefront and focus many of our team meetings around data and high-leverage activities to meet students' needs. Many of the classroom teachers have also engaged in professional development work outside of the district to enhance their current practices based on the latest research around teaching reading. Equity work is the North Star to everything we do in our community. UCS staff are committed to strengthening diversity, equity, inclusion in our school and throughout the Underhill community. In addition to our monthly equity theme, teachers examine our own biases and assumptions. Our Abar committee representatives and equity coach have supported conversations around perfectionism and sense of urgency. As we develop a robust multi-tiered system of support, grade-level teams are engaging in professional learning communities. PLCs promote a culture of collaboration with a focus on student learning and results. This time is essential for teaching and learning. Teams composed of classroom teachers, related service providers, interventionists, and building administrators meet each week to collaborate and analyze student data and adjust instruction to meet the needs of our various learners. We were thrilled this year to welcome families and community members back into our building as we emerged from almost two and a half years of safety protocols and restrictions due to the pandemic. In August, we kicked off our school year with a welcome-back picnic. Families and students gathered on the playground and enjoyed visiting with familiar faces and making new friends. Staff welcomed families from morning open house in the fall where they could meet their child's classroom teacher and have their child showcase their classroom and work they were proud of. Other celebrations and traditions that students, staff, and families enjoy this year include the Turkey Trap, Fun Run, Mass Parade, and Snow Motion. We look forward to an art and music night in May and everyone's beloved tradition, Rock the Day in June. This year, we have also been able to welcome parents to volunteer in our classrooms as well as other school programs. Parents come in weekly to support learners with reading, lead math activities, or help teachers with projects. This winter, we had 50 volunteers who supported students with our Snow Motion program. Building community is a core value at UCS, and we value opportunities to come together to celebrate and learn. Our PTO is also very active and strong. The group meets monthly to brainstorm and discuss how to best support students and staff at UCS. This group is dynamic and contributes to all of our celebrations by volunteering their time to support and providing tasty treats for students to enjoy. A member of our PTO has even applied for ARPA Fund to build new playground structures and upgrade our school garden. Our fingers are crossed that Underhill's ARPA Committee approves our application to enhance our outdoor spaces for students and the community to enjoy. Thank you.
Anybody have questions for Jen?
Oh, that's cool. Okay. Jen, on the report at the beginning, there's a summary of students, 17 on IEP, six on 504, and then there's 16 on what's called an educational support team plan. Can you help me understand that third category, how that differs from the other two?
Sure. So the educational support plans are for students who are identified who need some additional working skills. But we haven't gone through like, you know, the 12-week cycle to really think whether or not they need, we need to find out additional information on them. So if they're making progress, right? Most of the time if kids make steady progress, there's not a disability present. They might just need some differentiation or a different program to use to build upon those skills. So those EST students that are just identified as of right now are just building their skills in a different way.
So these are all mutually like, these are different students, the 17 and 6 and the 60?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So the IEP students are students who are found eligible through our special ed process.
Other questions? So when you're implementing the district priorities, which ones are easy and which ones are hard?
Good question. Gosh. I think social-emotional learning is something that we think about every day. You know, our kids' basic needs being that in order for them to access their learning. You know, if a kid comes in and they're in the red zone, right? They're kind of like running high, well then we need to adjust our instruction and how we're providing them the skills or how we're welcoming them to the community. So that's always like on our minds. I would also say equity as well, because that's not just a professional learning, that's a personal learning too. And then our, which one are easy and hard? I think the hardest one at the beginning of the year was engaging in conversations about literacy because that research was new and it felt really wrong at times. We felt like, oh gosh, did we do what was best for kids? And we did, of course, because we leaned with like skills in our heart. But as we engage in those hard conversations, growth happens and we're making some really valuable changes to our common assessment plan and how we are just, we're teaching kids and our approach to literacy.
Thank you. Yeah, it's always a tough adjustment.
It's a tough, change is hard sometimes.
Anybody else have questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to go. We'll lock up.
Okay. I think I made a mistake and I said my daughter. Thank you. It's nice to see everybody.
Go lock up.
You sure? Thank you.
You won't lose the lights, will you?
All right, so moving to the Golden Apple nominations. Andrew, Allison, I'm going to turn it over to you. I don't think we want to review them at the meeting so that there's some, one of a surprise when we have the event in May. Has everyone here done Golden Apples before? Have we all done Golden Apples before? Okay. All right, anything you want to share about the process this year? Anything, Allison, Andrew?
I will, I will pass the mic to Andrew if there's anything to be said. He sort of steered me through the process this year, so Andrew, I appreciate, appreciate you pointing me in the right direction for which way to go in terms of just process. Helpful. And I think it will be, I'll just say delightful nominations and just a lot, lots to be proud of in the schools for sure. People giving their time, talent, and treasures.
Yeah, I think this is, I know it's my favorite thing. It's a lot of people's favorite thing. Having the opportunity to look through and see contributions that our community members make that we might not be aware of on a day-to-day basis sitting at board meetings. So the process is basically Allison and I reviewed them in advance just to make sure that they all met the criteria, and they certainly did. We've got some wonderful nominees. And so all we need is a motion will approve them and then the administration will take care of contacting the folks who are awarded and hopefully getting them to the ceremony.
I move to approve the Golden Apple nominations.
Thanks, Kevin. Can we get a second? Second? Thanks, Diane. All in favor of approving the Golden Apple nomination, please say aye or give me a thumb.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that looks pretty unanimous to me. Thank you. Just a reminder that the Golden Apple Awards will be given out on May 22 at Camel's Hump Middle School. It starts at 6:00 PM with refreshments. So there's usually, you know, heavy appetizers, light dinner. You choose how you want to eat. But it's pretty great. And it's a short meeting. It's an hour max generally. So just giving everybody that heads up. But please come if you can, everybody, come and celebrate our volunteers in schools. Thank you for doing that, Andrew and Allison. Appreciate it. We have two policies to approve, the education records policy and the student attendance policy. Are folks comfortable approving them both together or do we need to separate them? It's like together is fine. Can I get a motion to approve the two policies, please? So moved. Thanks, Diane. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Any discussion on the education records policy or the student attendance policy? All in favor, thumb or aye, please?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Nay? I guess or a thumb down? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. Policies approved unanimously. Superintendent report. John, is there anything that you want to highlight?
This is a longer, it was a longer report, longer than I usually do, but I had a lot of information to share. But just any questions people have? A lot of information about Act 127. Some of the equity work that we've been doing. We had a good day, a full day, but a really good one. With Dr. Brown and our administrative team and our committee, very, very productive. Tara, Katie participated in that too. So him and Kennedy did as well. So I won't read it to you, but those are, those are some of the big ones.
Can I ask on the school calendar, is there, has there been any movement to getting the early release days or times the same across districts or is that pretty much district on their own?
Really district on their own. We haven't really had any discussion about that. But one of the, some positive pieces and one thing to highlight, because this came up, I think Ethan brought it up in an earlier board meeting, but the Tuesday in November, first Tuesday in November is a common school day for everybody in the region. So the, regionally, superintendents may improve a regional calendar that's connected to the tech center. And that wasn't a day that people did not want to either make uncommon or no school. So I do think though that once, you know, the presidential election, I think it's probably going to be a different story. But that's something that came up, so I just wanted to highlight that in the earlier board meeting. And then the other part about the calendar, there's very little, very few changes, nothing controversial. But we're doing a much better job regionally of talking about days where we don't want any after-school activities because they're really looking at things from holistic and trying to be as equal as we can. So Ed and Young Kapor, across Chittenden County, there won't be any after-school activities on those days at any of our schools in Chittenden County.
Any other questions for John on the superintendent report? I would have had a question about the act, but we're going to discuss it and pull that out separately. Yes, so that will be great.
I have a school calendar question.
Great.
It's about the school calendar. Can you, there's a little bit of confusion. I know that it was changed on the website or updated as far as the way the snow days work. I know community members as well as myself are confused as to whether they're built in or they come at the end depending on how many are called.
They, during the year, if we have a snow day, we highlight it and we add a date to the end of the calendar.
Okay, so snow days are not already like built in?
No.
And so what is the last day of school?
20th.
It is the 20th, Tuesday. Okay. I think that's it. It is Tuesday.
And we're going to publish it tomorrow.
Okay. Ethan, you have a question?
Well, just more of a thanks. I know it's hard to organize all that and I think it's great. Again, the regional work, John, that you're doing is fabulous and just makes a lot of sense to pull those pieces together. And just, you know, congratulations to Wilhelmina Picard and Blithe Leonard. I mean, they're an important piece of the fabric of the school community, so they'll be, they'll be missed.
Yeah, they will. Blithe has, she's got 35 years here in Mount Mansfield and she's been, she's done just a fantastic job, as Wilhelmina has too. They will be missed greatly.
Pictures to fill?
Blithe is going to come do some work for us around, right now she's helping with a lot of compliance work for Title IX, hazing, harassment, and bullying and some of our policies. So she's going to come back and do some hourly work for us around those pieces, make sure that we're doing things the right way.
Any other questions?
Real quick, John, Dr. Brown, he come on site? He did. He was here there. Yeah. Yep. That's how I read it. I just wasn't. Yeah, no, he was there, he was there all day on site. Great. Thank you.
All right, have I seen any other questions? Okay. Meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 27, please?
So moved.
Thanks, Andrew. A second? Thanks, Heather. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes? Can I get a thumb or an aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I forgot to, I neglected to mention that I'm not listed as being in attendance at the last meeting. That should be corrected. I did make a motion there, so you know I was there.
Apologies, Andrew. I'll put you in.
Thank you. And Diane's abstaining on the minutes. Tara's also abstaining. Thank you. Committee reports. I, we are, I know I'm not going to say it out loud, but I am ahead of schedule, so please give all, like I know some committees have done a lot of work and you can go more in-depth and other committees have done less work. And so we'll spend less time on those, so please don't hesitate to catch us all up there. Lisa? The new old finance for each year.
So I know we've done less work, but we did, we did meet and I was re-elected chair and began work on our charter. We'll add facilities to it as well as change some of the, the things underneath that for the mission statement. And we're looking to set a definite date and time for the meeting, maybe third Thursday of the month at 6 o'clock. I guess it was before, but that's where we're at right now. We discussed some of the short-term goals, looking at the five-year plan as well as the facilities plan, which we're anticipating getting from Nicole and John within the next month or so.
Great, thank you. Edie and Jason.
Our meeting was similar to Lisa's update. We, at the last minute, were able to elect me as chair and there were not enough voting members for the entire meeting, so it was difficult for us to really move forward and look at some of the verbiage of the current charter, think creatively about how to rewrite that as well as talk about the long-term and short-term goals as well as discuss a regular meeting schedule. And so the committee can look forward to an email from me addressing some of those things. And the minutes will be updated to the website probably this weekend, sent to Jenna today. So that is communication and communication, okay?
Great. Tara, DEIB.
So since the committee was formed after the board reorganization, we've met twice. We are moving right along. You'll see that we've proposed a charter for the committee. Let's see. So we are in the process of getting feedback from student high school leaders to help guide our work, knowing that a lot of what we are doing is in respect to board training and supporting the board and DEIB efforts. And then the overall district. Like John said, I got to spend the afternoon with the Abar committee and I got to meet Dr. Brown in person last Thursday. And we had an informal discussion with him during lunch and he's agreed to meet with the committee again on May 5 to talk more about how to set goals and what our goals should be. A couple of short-term ones and then the longer-term ones and how to really guide the work that we're going to do in this newly-formed DEIB committee. So it's been, it's been pretty exciting and getting to be with the Abar committee last Thursday was, was a lot of fun. Right? Just getting to know the folks in our district and the educators and all of their big plans and how they're working with the district's equity coaches and then bringing it back into their classrooms and their schools. It's just, it's really cool to watch this happen and to be a part of it.
Great, thank you.
Do I need to read the charter or is that, does that come?
It's linked, so are you ready to submit it to the board for approval? Is that, because it has draft on it. Are you looking for feedback on it? What's, how can we be helpful?
So I'd like to not consider it a draft. The committee voted on this and decided this was the charter that we wanted to go with. And then when I shared it with Dr. Brown last week, he was very supportive of it and thinks we've really hit the nail on the head with what we're trying to do in respect to overall board development and DEIB efforts.
So it's coming to the board as a seconded motion is what I hear? Or as a, yeah. When it comes from a committee to be approved, it comes as a seconded motion. If your committee already voted on it.
We did, yeah.
Okay, so then, board, any discussion on the charter?
I kind of missed the word approve on the minutes, I guess.
So you think we need for the next one?
I don't know. I mean, if I'm the only one who didn't get a chance to review it, I couldn't go along with it, but I.
You didn't see it? Because it's on there.
Yeah, I see it now. I printed off the minutes to rub it in my face that it does say approve DEIB charter. But after so many years, when I see committee reports, I don't think there's an action in there.
So let's take a minute to talk about it. Does that work? So that the committee doesn't get held up?
Tara, can you share it or do you have it?
It should be linked. Are you not with a computer tonight, Kevin?
No, I'm a person. We can share it on the screen.
Put it on the screen, yeah.
I'm fine. I can do it.
No, because we're gonna share it with everybody. That way if anybody's watching, it can see it also.
Figuring the IT guy without a computer and you're throwing me.
Cell phone is more powerful than your computer. Just can't find it. We can share it on the screen.
It's coming. I can read it while we're waiting if it's live.
Yeah, I got it. John's cooking all over it. I'm the one that put draft, too. I deleted it.
Can you make it like three times bigger? Some of us are far away.
I thought it was great. I'll just.
I don't know. Inclusion is capitalized. In the last sentence of the first bullet, I probably didn't need to mean.
That's an easy fix.
Yeah, just saying. Well, John's.
Any questions for Tara or other committee members on, yes, Tom?
This is great. I'm just trying to get an understanding of the outcome from committee. Am I right to say that this is largely to educate the board and make sure we kind of have a solid foundation in DEIB and an understanding of how it relates to the district? Are we looking for any, so first of all, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then are we looking, do you have a sense as to things, how we might apply this to our work? And should that be in the charter?
We, like I was saying earlier, we're connecting.
Sorry if I missed it.
Yeah, we're gonna work with Dr. Brown on May 5th and he's gonna help us set those goals and then help guide our work in that respect as to, here's our charter. And like I said, I shared the charter with him. He was very supportive of it. But then how we take the work that we're gonna do with him and translate it to larger board work. So we're waiting on May 5th to more inform what our next steps and what our goals are gonna be to keep working with a larger board.
Okay. Yeah, I wonder if we ought to wait on approving the charter until we can add that depth to it? You know, I think it's, you know, I think it's wonderful what the committee is setting out to do, but I also think it would be great to kind of enshrine the action steps beyond education of the board at the highest of levels, right? I mean, you know, the highest level that you do in a charter. So that's just a thought, that maybe we wait until you are able to have that conversation with him.
Were you expecting to see goals in the charter?
No, no, I don't think it's goals, but I think it's, you know, when I see the bullets, I see we will support the board in recognizing equity blind spots and we'll keep the board informed. And then we'll design opportunities, you know, for the board to learn. But, but so beyond that, I'm wondering, you know, an example that comes to mind is would we do some sort of policy equity audit? Would that be something in our purview? And is that something that we would want to put here, you know, say that we will, you know, on a regular basis, you know, be, you know, doing an equity audit? Or I don't know if that's quite the right term. So that's just a thought, you know?
Yeah, and that's.
If there's more than an educational component that we're thinking, we probably want to put it here. But you've already, it's already a seconded motion from, from your committee. It's just a thought.
Yeah, and I appreciate that because part of the informal conversation we had with Dr. Brown, he had suggested, because right now the district does not have an equity policy, but helping to implement something along that line, right? We have an anti-racism statement, but we don't have an equity statement or an equity policy. You know, and then taking on other things like the land acknowledgement right now. That's in limbo until we're able to find out more. Right? And then also just the education piece to the board. So you're looking for something a little more specific? Because we went very broad with this, knowing that we'd want to be able to pull in some really big things and maybe not some terribly huge things.
Yeah, I would just say that I'm not sure that I read your, this charter empowering this committee to take lead on an equity policy, if that is something that you would ultimately want to do. I may be reading it differently than others.
I think so.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything in the charter that prohibits the committee's actions in that direction. And I think that this is an early group, it's an early committee. And if we continue to practice of reviewing the charter yearly, then I think it gives us an opportunity to figure out the work for this year and then have a better idea of concrete steps for the next year. So I'm, I'm okay with that, especially hearing that, you know, you're working with Dr. Brown. You're finding out, you know, some of the blind spots, as it were, things like not having the equity policy and then working towards those. I, I'm okay with not being too specific at this point and see where it goes.
Thanks, Diane.
I was gonna say the same thing. I think that first bullet, equity blind spots, is appropriately broad enough. I think to Tom's point, I mean, in my mind, I was thinking, would a policy review get covered in that? I think so. Keeping the board informed on district issues. You know, and I think that can be interpreted to be a little bit more proactive than what the words actually mean there. So I think it's spot on. It's a good charter to get going. And best practice of the finance committee has always been to review the charter every year. And I think the same can be done going forward. I'm good with it.
Thanks, Kevin.
I think the second sentence in that first paragraph is the, is the big, you know, lead the board, skill development, understanding practice. I think that's where that gets the broad spectrum of leadership opportunities to the committee there. So I think that's a pretty convincing. Are we comfortable then, generally? All right, all in favor of approving the committee charter? Give me a thumb or say aye, please? Any opposed? Any extensions? All right. Charter is moving forward and write if you wouldn't mind to. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything, Tara, that you want to share about your meeting with Dr. Brown when he was at the school? Anything that about the way the district gave our credit, the advisory anti-racism committee is working? Anyone share with me?
So we get to talk with him informally during lunch and I tried not to ask too many questions because I wanted to let the man eat. But, right, mostly I like shouted out this charter at him and he was like, yeah, that's, yeah, that's great. And again, willing to meet with us later, but he did have. It was, so in the larger Abar Council, it was really interesting because he allowed the council to navigate their own conversations, right? He, you know, he was more of a mentor and he was there for when like questions came up or, you know, if there were like pain points somewhere. But overall, he did a lot of listening. And John, I don't know if he like, I don't know, reports back or sends something after his, his time with everybody. But I think just like having him in the room, and I'm unsure of the work that he was doing in the morning with John and the administrative team. And I know he met with like the Googers of Color too that afternoon. So he was certainly there for a full day. But I think the council is doing some great work. I heard a lot of really fantastic things about how they're working with the equity coaches across the district. But then, you know, I also, I heard a little bit of, how are we gonna do all, how are we gonna do all of this? Right? Because everybody wants to do what's best for the students. And it's, you know, finding that balance, right? And the time to make it all happen so that the students are feeling supported.
Thank you. Regional Collaboration Committee. Kevin, I think that's you.
Yeah, I'll take that one.
You're the new chair.
By the way, the hospitality here is great. I have my own little table, my own little things. We eat and compete. It's awesome. We here more often.
Because it's in your backyard.
Yeah, well, so are the other schools. Okay, so the Regional Collaboration Committee has met once for an hour. We basically had just those two words to go off from, regional collaboration. And I think it was four, maybe five of us met to, you know, try to, try to get some meat on the bones of the structure of this, of this new committee. The committee has entrusted me as the chair. So I took the facilitation role a little bit. We talked for majority of the time just on what, what, you know, what types of topics could this committee pick up? Not necessarily which ones should we pick up, but what's the broad scope from? And we, we had, we had some good brainstorming. There was a document, you know, initial document floating around, which we'll come back to the board after a couple more meetings to kind of present where we, we think the committee can spend its time over the next one to three years. Obviously, with Chuck stepping down, we talked a little bit about the role of the representative to the regional advisory group, committee, RAG?
Board.
Board, RAG. And the committee would like to pick that responsibility up with Ethan as the primary representative. But we'll try to have the committee to be as engaged as much as we can in the, in the stuff going on related to that area, which is, which is a, I think, a big part of regional collaboration, but certainly was not the only thing that we covered. Incidentally, in BT Digger, I think yesterday, there was an article that summarized a report that came out related to the career and technical education centers. And the article, I thought, was pretty informative. And then if you click on the link, you can read the 37-page report. But it basically says what we've been thinking and saying all along, that there's a lot of work to do to improve, a lot of opportunities to improve in that area with respect to how these schools are governed.
79-page report?
79 pages? Okay. Not front and back. That's the best I can do. So anyway, that's something to look up for homework if folks want to read about it. Yeah, so we are gonna meet next Monday. I think we said the 17th of April, which will be next Monday. And then another time Monday afternoon in May. And then we come back to that, I think, the May or June meeting to meet with the board on charter. And I think just the charter is what we reviewed with the board.
Great. Any questions on any of those other reports? Okay, thank you. The Human Resources Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, so we'll have a report the next meeting for that. All right, next agenda item, just sailing through. I know, I'm really pushing it here. Discuss Act 127 of 2020. So I think we all know the basics of this. The legislature is changing the way school funding works, starting in the 2025 school budget, school year budget. Want to talk about it, John?
Yeah, so in our next, I'm sure. Yeah, I've read the law over several times and actually talked to Ethan many times about it. And have added, added a lot of information in our annual report. Did get some comments from community members about it, asking some questions and, you know, a little bit concerned. And as we're developing next year's, you know, the FY '25 budget, next year is gonna be when, I guess, the rubber hits the road because that's when we're gonna have that 5% tax rate cap. There's no way for us to, that I'm aware of, to get around that because of the number of equalized pupils that we're going to lose. So 300 and I can't, I don't have, I have it in the report, but it's 300 and.
63.
63. And that happens like that. So, and then, you know, over the, you get the cap each, over three fiscal years. So.
Just to back up, so everybody is talking about the same thing. The number of students that we're educating in our district will not change. We will just get funding for 363 fewer students because of the way the students are weighted. So we will continue to educate the same number of students at a discount of about 15%?
Yeah, we're close to that. So it's our students are, we're not going down, as you just said, 362 students. It's just the way that they determine the weighting of students is, is changing, you know, pretty dramatically. So we're gonna need to do our best to communicate that effectively in as many ways as we can over the next year or so. There's some, there's gotta have to be some technical guidance from the AOE around, you know, what's gonna be acceptable spending and what isn't. Right now, it's very vague in the law. Essentially, it says that, you know, it won't be excessive spending based on, you know, a huge decline in enrollment. That's essentially what it says. So that's, that's pretty broad. So they're going to need to come up with some sort of summative information that we can use because we are gonna, that 10% for Doug, increase in ed spending for equalized pupil, we're gonna hit that for sure. And so then it's gonna have to go to this committee that is established by the Secretary of Ed and they're gonna take a look at our spending and hopefully have some sort of criteria that they're gonna share with us and determine whether our spending is excessive or not.
And it's likely that we won't have that information before we move the budget together.
I, you know, right, we've, I mean.
Almost guaranteed.
I mean, I agree with you, yes. I have emailed and Nicole, Jorge has as well, the AOE to say, you know, what's the criteria? And they're, they don't know. Right? You know, they say, they refer to the law, but the person that is in charge of this and probably knows the most is saying we're gonna, there's gotta be some sort of guide. Uh, because it's really, really, really broad right now. So um but I I wanted to take questions from people. And if there's something that I can't, if you have them, and if I can't answer it, I'll go back and try to find the 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 answers to it.
Ethan, I know you popped your hand up before. Was that to have information or do you have a question?
Um, more for clarification. Our equalized per pupil number goes down. It just becomes more expensive per pupil. We don't really get less money because, right, we're still gonna establish a budget with all those pieces. We're gonna send more money out. It's just gonna be more expensive to maintain now the current structure, right? Like ten, fourteen percent. It's not worth money, is it? Really, or is it?
It it's connected to funding because the more higher weighted the student is, the more um yeah, that that um, the base yield effect will set in on the budget. So, you know, that's, I, I, you're, you're right, and there is an influence on funding.
Right.
In twenty thirty, our taxpayers will have increased in taxes required to fund the students that we're educating. It's gonna just, the first few years, it's gonna be not as much, and then after that point, it probably will jump up significantly. Unless the legislature does something else.
Yeah, there, you know, we're getting a cap right now at five percent, which is in some ways gen generous, because they're gonna have to, the state has to make up for that money. Because they're giving these weights immediately. So there's gonna be many districts that benefit. So it is, it's gonna have an influence on the fund as well. For sure. I just don't, they don't know the exact impact that is going to happen. But there, it is um clear that the tax rate here is going to go up you know, over the next five to ten years. Based on this law, unless it's, unless there's some adjustment to it.
All right, Ethan.
Sorry, uh, it's gonna go up every year over the next five to ten years.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's gonna be incremental and then kind of a, a bigger piece, right? Because it's, you're saying it, the state is allowing us to ease into it, but we'll still be it with
Yes. Some point that um, you know, the full weight of the tax rate will hit the I mean, it is good you have three years because you can, you know, it it takes a big chunk of the blowout, but not the whole thing.
Um, and on top of that, we've had two years of um of lower taxes because of one time money. So next year, this year we're in now, next year our taxes are artificially lower than they would normally be, and then the following year, we will get hit with not only the adjustment from the artificial reduction, but also from the um increase in our tax rate.
Right, and our trend has been that we've either had a minimal increase on the tax rate that we control or a decrease for four, four years. So this is gonna be a big change. So when you think of the um you know, the whole change or the relative change is gonna be significant. Now, one, I guess you could call it positive. Uh, and I don't have this right off the top of my head, but our tax rate is actually, even with this cap, is lower than it was a few years ago. So, you know, that's one positive way to look at it.
Do you know why?
The uh, because of the, the, the uh, well, some, one part of it is some efficiencies that we've gained, you know, over the last five years. The other part is that there has been a surplus in the ed fund, which has been used in the formula to increase that base yield amount, and that has, you know, that has a direct impact on the tax rate. But the way I read the law right now, um, unless there's some additional technical law guidance, regardless of what the base ed amount is, we're gonna be paying five percent more. So that could be good or bad. Because, you know, I gotta think that they're not gonna have that big surplus forever. So you know, this, and they were not when they were thinking of that base ed amount, they weren't thinking about us. So, but that, that is again, something somewhat optimistic or positive. They could reduce that base ed amount, and we're still gonna get a five percent cap. What I didn't model, what I can, if you folks want me to, is the CLA. That I could do that, just take this year's CLA and tell you what it would mean with a five percent uh increase to our homestead tax rate, the district homestead tax rate, I can do that. First, it'll be a complete estimate because common level appraisal is likely to change unless there's a reassessment of the appraisal in some of our towns.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like, oh, I haven't
I, I don't, I don't need CLA. I think that just adds more confusion.
That's what I thought, too.
That's my two cents to speak on that. The uh this, this could be, this will be, I think, pretty significant uh for the board and the district. Uh, I guess a couple of things uh that come to mind is, do we know um any way to tell how much more we would be spending to provide the services to the students who are going to be counted less, like how you know, there's, there's a, there's a new ratio, right? A new, a new uh better calculated number at how much uh funding should go to students of various categories, right? Can we look at our, our spending and compare how much we're spending compared to how much the state thinks we should be spending? You know what I mean? With these formulas?
I think so. I think like we could do that.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out like, how do we um there's a big part of this, which is communicating, right? And um, you know, to try to look at the numbers a couple of different ways, to either share with the board, share with the community, share with the state in terms of like, we're, we're spending this much money, you know, and we're, we're losing it. I don't, I don't know exactly how that would look. Um, but then beyond communicating, uh, is there anything else that uh you see that the district doing? Are we, are we gonna be looking at how do we how we get to, you know, uh, the same level of spending? Or have we pretty much concluded that this is coming?
Well, when you think of three hundred and sixty three equalized pupils, I mean, you couldn't save enough money to
It's a whole middle school.
Yeah, it's, it is like, it is, it's almost like un- unimaginable that you could cut enough to even put a dent in that.
How much, how much is it?
I'd have to do the math on that, but I can, I can definitely, I can do that.
Well, we need five hundred thousand or?
Oh, more than that. Yeah. I'm just taking some notes.
Yeah, I guess that would be another thing, like, how come up?
So how much money would we need to save?
Assuming like, yeah, everything, uh, assuming this budget here
Five and a half million dollars. Right.
Five and a half million, that's all places. So that's ten percent of our, of our annual budget in order for us to have a kind of flat scenario.
It's, it's an impossible number. I mean, truly an impossible number. Yeah.
No, actually, I have a question. Just to make sure I'm understanding this. Especially when it comes to like educating these students that we're losing funding for. And so you're saying that in the, in the law, there is wording on how, how much money we can spend outside of what we get to educate these kids? Like, are these kids gonna be losing services? Like, how are we gonna continue to educate them the way that they're being educated now? If we're losing, sort of, again, like raising tax rate and stuff? Is there a certain amount of money that we're allowed to spend on them outside of?
It's very broad.
Okay.
What they're saying right now is that um, that if you're spending um ed spending for equalized pupils, if it goes up ten percent or more, um, the commit, the Secretary of Education has to assemble a committee. And they will take a look at the spending and say, okay, if you had a huge decline in enrollment, are you spending too much? Are you spending excessively, you know, based on the conditions? You know, we're, we're gonna still meet the needs of students, that's our plan, but it's gonna cost more. I do, you know, I think that Kevin's question is a good one. In that you know, post this, these, this cap, you, you'll that's when I, the um you know, there might be some savings, but not three hundred and sixty three equalized pupils worth. When we lose ten, it's a law. When we use twenty, it has an influence on where it goes down. And significantly, so this is um, this is a big deal, and uh, we're gonna, you know, need to be dealing with this for for a bit. Unless the law changes, unless there's some carve out or some changes to the law that when we met with the legislators, I don't know if you remember, but this was part of the discussion, was that there is opportunity for, you know, over the next three years to make some changes to the legislation so that um, our tax, the tax rate in some of these towns doesn't go out of sight.
So there are two pieces here that I just want to bring up. The same way that when we keep our budget tight and other districts' budgets go up, all the money is pooled, and that yield is set by total budgets, right? Budgets across the state. So that yield will change based on our budget, the same way it changes based on other school districts' budgets. So we won't know the impact until all the budgets pass, right? Like, there are all these pieces that we just won't know how everything is impacted, so.
And, and there'll be an adjustment, right? Because the state will say, look, this is what we can afford in the ed fund. So we're gonna give you ninety seven percent of the equalized pupils. But Edie's point is really good. If people are, everybody spends more, then that yield is going to be influenced. So, and that impacts, so what you spend in Canaan influences what you spend in Brattleboro um and vice versa. So if the budgets are going up, everybody spends more.
So my point is, there's a, there's not an incentive for us to make drastic cuts before we know how it's truly gonna impact us. Same way, there's not an incentive for any district to do that until afterwards, right? So that first year.
Yeah, I think you will have to wait and see.
I think we have to wait and see.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's why they're giving us those three years of, of cap on the tax rate increase, so that we can have that opportunity to wait and see, because we don't have enough information as we're putting the budget together. But we do know we will have a tax increase. Whatever we do, there will be a five percent tax increase. Won't be more than that. Yes, Tom?
Um, thanks for this great conversation. Lots of noise here. I'm gonna come back to me. Sorry, too much noise.
Go ahead, Diana. Um, I see, I, I like the example weighting of changes that you, you guys included in the presentation. It's a small sample, and I'm wondering, yes, uh, such a, a larger one, like throughout the state, is already known to the legislature? So that you got, so that there's a sense of how many sort of winners and losers and et cetera there are?
Yes.
Do we have that? And they've already done that, you know, for the state, correct?
Yeah, I took the, these numbers right from their, to, to
So they probably already have a sense of it, and I think that, you know, overall, like, you know, I, I agree like with what Edie said, is that this is something that may change year to year, because I don't believe anyone feels that any of our public schools are, the public school districts are, are lavish or wasting, are, you know, overusing. This was an attempt to support some of the struggling places and struggling learners with, you know, adjusting the formula, and I get that. So um, it'll be interesting. I think we do have to just sort of understand what we can control, what we can't control, you know, report back, see how it goes year to year, and then press on changes if this isn't the formula that's going to work for the entire state. Because it's not just supposed to work for one subset of people, it's supposed to work for the entire state. And have us maintain, or even improve, the quality of education that we're delivering.
Yeah, um, I, I agree um emphatically uh with what you're saying, and one of the things we're gonna, that I am gonna do, or we're gonna do, is take the five year um forecasting, the five year forecasting that we, the Finance Committee talked about, see, you know, after these three years, what is our tax rate gonna be? You know, based on what we're forecasting we're gonna spend, and um you know, really, at least in the near term, our, our enrollment is gonna be static, so just trying to factor in. Use the weighting system in Act one twenty seven, and then apply what we think is gonna be a pretty flat enrollment rate. And then I think we can forecast what the tax rate would be, at least give people a, after this, the, the third year with that five percent cap.
Ethan?
I'm not sure this is a lot of extra work, Tom, but it, would it, would it be useful for us to look at potential modeling of the minimum tax increase? And then, I don't know if this is even possible, but like what the maximum to just sort of catch up? Would it, would there be any difference in sort of not easing into the process?
I'll take a look at that, yeah. I mean, I think that, that is um, that's possible, too.
It also just may be a, a messaging framework as well, just to sort of give people it would, it would be, it would be great to be able to say to people, this is what it looks like over the long term, as you know, year to year, we don't really know, but here is sort of the, the, the long term implications of what, what our costs are gonna be.
I'll offer a range. Yep. That's, that's a good idea. We like ranges, right? Kevin?
Tom, how's the volume? All right, you can type your question in if you want.
Complete uproar. Virginia household.
But again, I just want to say, and you, and Kevin, you're good at this, we have to really focus on what levers we have that we can control out of this. I'm not sure that there are any short term, good short term levers that we have for this.
In the near term, no. I mean, I, I don't, I think, like, when, identify them and when do you when do you pull them? Because this last budget cycle was kind of the opposite. Once you saw what was coming, it was like, well, we need to make sure this budget isn't too low, because the comparison is from what we just passed to what we're gonna propose.
Yeah.
That's where that five to ten percent threshold comes in. So we put a lever into the budget. And I think we might have consumed that, most of that with the contract, but still, I mean, we're thinking about it there. The other lever, maybe to look at, and, and arguably should be doing this all the time, so maybe we are, but do all of our students, you know, have, have the rights, equalized people assigned to them? Are we getting all of the income statements that we can get, you know, to make sure that our student body is appropriately and best represented in the, in the weighting?
Well, we do double check, we've done a lot better, I would say, uh, over the last five years. Well, we do double, we've done a lot better, I would say, over the last five years. There has not been an, well, um, so there's a couple of things. We're gonna need to try to, I think, do a good job of trying to get those income statements, or hopefully they'll be required. And that's something that we will have to do. It's in the law. The, the state hasn't produced the, and that's supposed to be the AOE that does that, a form that we can use. That will help. And then your, the, our free and reduced lunch numbers, which aren't really part of the, necessarily, the equalization in the law. There hasn't been really any impetus to do it because lunches have been free. So nobody's gonna do that when, um, when you don't have to. So I think trying to get those income states is, is gonna be the best indicator for us.
How old's our data on that? The income statements, the free and reduced lunch statements, 2019?
Yeah, it's pretty old.
So when we talk about our, our percentage, we're talking about 2019 numbers. I just wanna be clear.
Yes, yeah, they're always, so it's pretty old.
We have that conversation with folks.
Yeah. And then when, you know, you have two years, um, when it was COVID, it was, yeah, those, that, that data is useless. It is not accurate at all. So I think the drive is to try to get the best income, you know, statements that we can, so that we get the best weighting that we can.
And then if we were to actually do that, that wouldn't take effect for the 2025, would we? The three years here, because they've already set for 2025, right? We just passed our 24 budget. Yeah, no, but like, so like that there, we are assuming we're losing 363 equalized pupils. And that's based off of the numbers from 2019, 2019. So if we were to redo those numbers at some point, hopefully, if I have some miracle next year, that would be, would be effective.
If that happened, you know, then we would have better information. I don't think that's going to happen. It's, it's more likely that it happens for FY '26, this good year. So I don't think we're gonna have any different data than we have right now.
And that's because we need their form, not the free and reduced lunch forms?
Yeah, right now, um, it's, it's complicated because, um, the, a lot of the weightings, the weighting is based on, um, if, if you get federal support for food. You know, whether it's for infants or if you get, um, uh, vouchers, food vouchers. And, uh, so that, so what they're trying to do now is really have a more objective way to say, okay, this is how, this is what you're actually making. People are bringing, you know, what on their W-2 or form. And, um, obviously confidential, but it'll give us the best, most accurate information of what is the demographic in our, you know, in our communities.
Just like underline, I, I think in the timeline that we have, we got, you know, started on that somehow. Pressure State came up with our own form, figured out what incentive we're gonna provide to encourage families to fill, fill those forms out. That would only help, I think, that would only help us with more accurate data. I mean, who knows which way it'll swing? But I think, I gotta imagine if we get 100% of our families sharing with us where they are on, on that demographic, that would be better than what we have today for data.
Would, would be better. We don't think we can make up our own form. We'd have to use the, the state, yeah.
So I have something provisionally approved, you know, maybe something. And one more question. Back, the first question, or the question that I asked Jen on the, so we have these three categories, right? Of students, the IEP and the 504. And I think those have, um, weighting associated with them, right? Because that funding comes from other sources. We have funding in other ways.
That's not part of the weighting.
Right, but the funding itself comes.
It's part of the block.
Part of the block, right. This other, 16 students of 153, 10% of students are on educational support team plan. The, and you said that was, that was, you know, they're, they're not qualified for IEP at that point or anything. So where does that funding come from, that support team?
Our local budget. You know, with some very minimal Title I funds, but.
No, but men, and the, all other things being equal, the, the student is 1, 1.0 in terms of cap, right?
There is no weighting for them.
It's just poverty, English learners, and rural schools.
In grade, and what grade you're in.
Yeah, that's what it says here on that. So it doesn't count the, a special ed group.
No, or at risk. So those are kids that aren't included in, or 504 for that matter. Because 504 is not, you know, there isn't funding for 504 either. That comes out of the local budget.
But the IEP, students on IEPs get funding, we have block grant. So the sooner you move a student onto an IEP, the sooner the funding comes.
Not anymore.
No.
It's just a set amount of money based on the number of students now. It's not.
Based on the number of students.
Not the number of students that are on the plan, the number of students total in the school. So whether we have 10 students or whether we have 500 students, yes. It used to be based on the specific student, but it's not.
Right, it was a, yeah, it was.
So my points are all in.
You got 57% funded by the state, and then there was other higher percentages based on the needs.
Okay, just to speak to Kevin, I also, my understanding is that's kind of part of, that support system is part of like the, the multi-tiered system of support.
Yep.
Yep, that's tier two or tier three, one, one, two, and three, depending on what the needs are of the student. Does the multi-tiered, uh, structure align with how the pupils are being counted?
No, no.
Because it's English language learners and poverty. And grade, grade that you're in, right? So younger kids get less money, older kids. But John, depending on the solutions, and this is a question for you.
Sure.
Depending on the solutions that any school uses, once you go up on those tiers supports, that can be additional bodies, that can be, it can be, it can cost a lot of money to do that.
Yeah.
But it's not funded in any other way.
So those, that's a lever.
The other piece that you're bringing up that I just wanna flag for folks is our older, our younger grades have more students in them, right? Like, our, we're losing students at the older, proportionally. Our, right, John, our younger, we have more students in our younger grades than we do our older, the older grade. Like, our high school is smaller than it normally is or has been historically. And our younger grades are bigger than they have been historically. So eventually, we will have more students, but we will be getting less money because we have mostly younger students as opposed to older students also. Whereas now.
Yeah, um, it's more than we, we, we were declining, and now we are, we're not. So that's a good thing. But some of those declines are now in the middle of the high school.
Right.
So that's true. And with more, we have more preschool kids, too, than we had, you know, five years ago.
We should get 0.494.
Yeah, it's less than one. So it's very, it is very complicated, for sure. And we won't have all the answers ne- next year. I think we'll have more answers in FY, like, when we're preparing for FY '26. Because they don't really know how they're gonna, what, how this committee is gonna analyze school district budgets.
Well, and the Secretary of Education has stepped down at, at the end of this month, and a few other key people, at least one other key person is stepping down, so.
Brad James is gonna retire, and he has the most institutional knowledge of anybody.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Great question. In comparison, and you may not know this, to how other states run the budgeting for education? Like, what, what does this, like, and we're having to know our community members, how out of the box is this in Vermont? Yeah.
Yeah, very out of the box.
In Massachusetts, the district is told how much money they get to spend.
Like, I would do a special item, blocks.
Yes, that's, that's, they're pretty similar in New York, too. Massachusetts, I'm most familiar with. And that's the way they do it. They tell you this is what you, this is how much money you're gonna get.
Figure it out.
And Massachusetts does pretty well with a much more diverse population than Vermont. I'm not picking on Vermont, but.
Oh, no, that's, that's what I'm just, very.
Yeah. I wish I had heard news.
It's okay, John.
But I did not create this! And, and in fact, we went, we met with several committees. Edie and I did, and said, hey, are you looking at some things? And, you know, it was one of the, it was, you know, the tenets of it are good, to be equitable and give to people that need the most, but there's winners and losers. And that's, you know, I think Ethan has said it a few times, that, that why not, you know, lift up these people up without putting other people down? And that's essentially what has happened.
Certainly puts us in a position of having a major choice. To run that.
Yeah, we need more money in the system.
I can't believe that, I, I just find it so hard to believe that they're basing a whole structure and how it's gonna affect certain districts going off of such old and outdated numbers. Like, I'm still trying to wrap my brain around, like, how can they do that? Like, the numbers are almost five years old, and they may not have been that accurate to begin with. It's now, like, drastically impacting how we can educate our children. And, like, I'm sure it's happening on the other way in other areas. Like, how can this, like, how do you write a law like this with just numbers that are so wildly inaccurate? But have such a vast impact?
The law was passed in 2020 with the data that was the year before. With the delay, the five-year delay on when it could go into effect, to give districts the opportunity to prepare.
You're like, so without redoing, without having, and then there was a pandemic. Right, yeah. But like, I just feel like without having an accurate way of judging realistically the actual poverty in every district, how can we just?
They're not, they're not there yet. The numbers that would be accurate are English language learners. They'll know, you know, they know who those folks are. And the grade level of students. But that's what we report now. Right. But the, the poverty data is, is probably not very accurate.
But you're right, the AOE should have been working on this. Yes. Tom had to go, but he typed in, um, question point around thanking Edie and John for bringing this to the board for discussion tonight. And I'd like to encourage you to continue to work to forecast the best we can, plan for various scenarios, and prepare, um, execute public communications. So that's making sure we keep folks informed. And he's wondering if the Finance Committee will take lead on this. Seems like something they and the full board should be engaged in regularly so we can best position ourselves for this big change. So just to read his comments, and I think that is gonna be part of the.
Yeah, I don't know about the lead, um, but I, I think almost, I think every committee should probably assess this from, from their lens. I think that in, in terms of, you know, are there levers? Are there impacts that, or, you know, obviously, community engagement and communication has a big component, um, regional collaboration. I think the others, you can make a connection, you can think about it longer.
I don't think there's a connection to the HR committee at all. Go ahead.
Well, maybe a little bit, but I think I was just gonna say the same thing that Kevin just said. There's a.
Head council, the only lever you have, so it's your point, right?
Lots of implications here, for sure. And we need to be thinking about this as a broad, like, and, and engaging the community as to what the community wants to see, how do they want, you know? There's such synergy between the dynamics of the town and the school. It's, uh, it's gonna be a really interesting conversation.
Can I add to that? Sure. Um, I think when the Community Engagement and Communications Committee meets to like really look at what we can do, I think in the same way that the DEIP committee is working, you know, board goals and information, informing the board of things. One of the ways that the Community Engagement Committee can support is, I think, committee collaboration. So in that way, you know, Finance Committee putting this together, how does Community Engagement Committee assist in that, um, model? And just looking to our group as a resource instead of the Community Engagement Committee having to solve that for the entire district. Good folks?
Yep.
All right, are we ready to move on from this lovely topic that we are so excited to talk about? The tiny piece of good news is that the Legislature is looking at making universal meals permanent, which will help our district. Okay, moving on, next.
Moving on. I mean, it would be good for our district, but it, that's the only thing we have to get the forms filled out, right?
Well, they're gonna have to have that income form. They're supposed to, anyway.
I mean, there's supposed to be a new university mobile, new year. But yes, okay, so that good news. Anyway, um, the SBA resolutions, you wanna just give us a quick overview? Well, I hadn't quite planned on that, but that's, that's okay. Just, there, did you want to make sure that people are mindful that if districts wish to submit resolutions, um, there's a whole online format? And the deadline for Resolution Committee is no later than June 15th, 2023. The SBA often comes up with their own set of resolutions. I haven't heard anything about them this year so far because of this beginning of the year has been so much involved with the legislative session. So, um, our district has come up with some resolutions in the past, which are, you know, any topic of significant statewide national concern, you know, something that would be important in terms of how the SBA should position itself to change education for the better, advocate for better in the legislation, in the, in the legislature. Certainly, people could be talking about the recent act that we just got off the topic for. So it, right now, it's just to mention that if people were thinking about such resolutions, if they had ideas in mind, to start working on them now and present them to our board in a timely fashion so we can approve them as a board submission to go to the SBA. We actually only have a couple of months, so it's a pretty tight timeline. We would want them at the board meeting on May 8th, which is our next board meeting. So that would be the time to have it because the May 22nd board meeting is the Golden Apple Awards. And we could technically do it for June 12th, but that's right at the very end of the year. So if we have, um, things that we would like for the SBA to work on, ideally, we will have it for our next board meeting, or at least for the discussion at our next board meeting, and then put a committee together to put that, um, put the wording together. I don't know, this, this was just a, a shared information that we would often, we come into a meeting in a panic saying, we need, if we need anything, we need to do it right now. So this is lots of notice, lots of opportunity to have that conversation or those smaller conversations about things that we would like for the SBA to work on. Questions?
So, are there, other than Act 127 and CT? So are there, other than Act 127 and CDE governance, which are two that we brought up in the past, are there any other high-level topics that we should be thinking about from anybody?
I have things, but I don't. I mean, I, one of the things that I think is really important is what's going on with Carson Makin or what the Carson Makin ruling versus common benefit. It's not common benefit.
Yeah, no, I know what you mean. That was a, it was a common opportunity, but I think, that's what I think we're dealing with.
So, so they, so what, the Supreme Court rules that if you fund private schools, you can't use religion as a reason to fund or not to fund. They are excluded. So right now, all of our tax money is pooled, and public dollars are being used to fund private schools across the state, independent schools and religious schools. In Vermont, as part of our constitution, it says that if, that your tax dollars will not be used to fund somebody else's religion. So those two things are in conflict, but because the Supreme Court made the ruling, that trumps our constitution in Vermont. So that is the thing that, and every dollar that is spent on private education is not spent on public education. So some of the reason that 127 happened is because the Ed Fund is being stretched and stressed, and we have schools that have 18 students in them in the state, 36 students in them in the state, just tiny, tiny schools that are perhaps not as rural as you think. Or towns chose not to have a public school and are sending their kids out to private. So I would really like the SBA to work on something around that, but they are doing a little bit of work on it right now, but it's not a big priority. Actually, I thought it was, because that's really been the, that's consumed meetings in terms of the last resolution, which said we should work towards resolving this issue in favor of not funding or asking the private institutions to come up and be, have the same sort of standards of acceptance, et cetera. So, and I think you guys have heard a lot of that already. So I think that that's still a hot topic, and something like that is probably going to come out from the SBA, but if we have another version or iteration of that and wish to put forth that piece, that would be great coming from our district. But like I said, I haven't heard of the other topics for resolutions. There's a resolutions committee in the SBA, and I'm not on that. That's been my favorite, because we had this conversation. But we've taken as a hot resolution last year as well, which, you know, had a lot of contention about which direction we should go in, whether it should be centralized or whether it should not. Ethan, you put your hand up, you have a resolution?
No, I think I'm just trailing my inner Kevin, just wondering if there were resolutions from last year, previous years that we thought we liked and didn't kind of make it through, but maybe need a little more discussion.
Yeah, so Diane can send the resolution link to folks through email?
I'm sure I can. There is a SBA meeting on Wednesday, so I may find out more about it. But I did not see a resolution that's actually in the agenda. There's a bunch of other things that's.
And it's on their website. If you dig into their website, it's really not even that hard to find.
No, no, I'm looking at it right now, so.
So that's the story of that. Yeah, the other piece of the private schools is that they are not financially accountable. Like, we have to publish our budget, they don't. We have to publish our outcomes for students, they don't. They can choose who takes different tests. They don't have to provide, well, they will, starting in this next school year, have to provide special education. So that's coming up. Anyway. Right, there's the whole resolutions page, but, okay, I can send that on.
I guess I'd be interested in any other topic that, like, our district has a significant or unique perspective on to bring to the SBA? Rather than just representing a statewide issue and weighing in one way or the other on the state. Is there something about that that's particular to M and U that we want to make sure that the SBA is aware of? Put that in the form of a resolution. I think the two that I brought up, that we've brought up as resolutions in the past are somewhat unique, but I'm wondering if there's anything else that we have we want to bring up.
An update on opening meeting on IP.
I like that.
Right, and the regional collaboration group, Mike. All right, any other discussion on the resolutions? I think we'll put it on the next agenda just as a topic, but if a committee wants to work on it or a committee discussion brings it up as a, this is something that needs to go forward, please give me a heads up on that. Any other business or future agenda items? So I just wanted to make it really clear that Chuck resigned. So Jericho is looking for another board member. And Tom has been keeping a toehold in and is really feeling pulled and stretched, and is ready to give us a date for his term also. So Jericho is actually looking for two board members, if anybody knows. Stu is putting a notification together. It'll go out in the next couple of days. It'll go in the Jericho, Brown River, and District Happenings, I think, and the Front Porch Forum for Jericho. But if anybody knows anybody who would be a good, oh, Stu, you're here. We missed you for a roll call. If anybody has any folks that they would recommend, please let them, please let us know. Please let them know that they could apply. You can talk to any board member at all about what it's like to be on the board, but we are actively recruiting. Anything you want to add, Stu? You're muted.
No, thank you, Edie. Just other than, we'll probably get that out, probably in the next couple of days. I'll work with you on when we actually send that out.
Great, thank you. I don't have any other business, I hope I didn't forget anything. So if we can get a motion to adjourn, then we, our next meeting is May 10th, eight? May 8th. We don't have a second meeting in April because of vacation week. So if anybody's going on vacation, I will live vicariously through you. Have a great vacation. Happy warm weather and a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Andrew, Heather, Heather, Andrew, thank you both. Please vote by signing off and hanging out. And thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and enjoying these.
Have a great night, everyone. Happy spring.
Good night.
Night, take care.